Well, good morning. We're gonna go ahead and I think start, respect everybody's time. I know Jill had an earlier appointment and she was coming from another place, so she'll be here soon. We begin with County Attorney's Office today. Your budget already queued up and ready to go.
Okay, thank you very much. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Kimberly Graham, I'm the Polk County Attorney, here this morning to present our fiscal year 2526 budget request. I just want to start by thanking everyone in my office who worked so hard all the time to forward justice in our county and to hold people accountable who harm other people in our county. And then also to thank everyone who works in Polk County. There's a lot of people that are employed by Polk County who do so much important and amazing work, much of which, I think unfortunately, people who live in Polk County aren't even aware is done by Polk County employees. That just makes all of our lives better and makes our community better, so thank you. So, um, go ahead. So our first slide, we have estimated revenue of $2,942,000. Our requested expense for the entire budget for that year, for next year, 2526, is $21,309,000. We have 128.75 current full-time employees. And the amount by which our requests are over our current budget is $235,000. And we will talk about that later. So, the revenue estimate, the revenue decrease compared to the current budget is a $36,000 loss. And that is due to the ending of de-cap funding for child welfare recovery, which is sad but unfortunate. That's gonna be a reduction in funds to use in our child welfare system. And then Senate File 2435, which required schools to enforce truancy mediation and rules, removed the Polk County Attorney's Office from some of that function, which means that we will no longer be the ones responsible for doing the mediations and moving people forward in that area. And so we won't have that revenue from doing those mediations any longer, because that's been now put on the schools to do. The expense increase compared to current budget is $898,000. And primarily, that's made up of cost of living increases, anniversary and merit increases, and increases to cost of health insurance. We have miscellaneous adjustments of $7,000. And then our decision packages, which we'll get into more in detail here, of $235,000. So our decision packages, and just for the sake of regular people watching this on video maybe later, who don't know what the heck a decision package is or what that means, I certainly didn't when I came to the county. It just means requests. It means things that we're asking the county to fund for fiscal year 2526, or additional funding that we are requesting for fiscal year 2526. So, we currently have a victim offender dialogue program, which I just want to thank Supervisors McCoy and Altringer for coming out to our presentation last week to see what's, what we're doing in that program. We are only able to do a small fraction currently of the court-ordered victim offender dialogues and community represented dialogues that are ordered by the court. So we're requesting $32,000 to be able to do more of those. And then, we have not had a continuing legal education or CLE budget increase in, as long as anyone in the office can currently remember, so it's probably been 20-plus years. While the cost of all those things, of course, including travel to conferences and continuing legal education events, has risen over those 20 years, obviously. So we are always behind the eight ball, trying to just fulfill all of the CLE requirements that our attorneys are required to have every year to keep their law licenses. So we're asking for a $50,000 increase for our training, travel, and continuing legal education budget.
What's the current amount?
Sorry?
What's, what's your current amount?
I don't have that here, but I can get it to you, or Ashley, who's our budget manager, can probab, can get that to you as well. One of us will get it to you.
Thanks.
And then, we're requesting a social worker, which I also discussed with the board last year. And I've, I will get in more into the reasons why we are requesting that. But in a nutshell, most of the people that we contact in the criminal legal system have mental health issues, substance use disorder issues, poverty issues, and/or a combination of all of those. And so, we have a golden opportunity, when those folks are interacting with our office, to get them and connect them to services and do some intensive casework to get them back on track. Sometimes they're off their meds, sometimes they are homeless, sometimes they... And so, we're really in a unique position to be able to reduce crime in the future by addressing people's needs at that point. And that's why we're requesting the social worker. And then, again, we've had no increase in our publications budget, which may sound like publications. But of course, we have to keep up to date on Court of Appeals decisions, on research. We have to look at sometimes cases and how things are handled, even in other jurisdictions. And so we have these publications provided to us for our research. And that has continued to increase, so we're just asking for an increase to cover the increases in those costs. So...
So you're, it also indicates Thomas Reuters, which is an online search platform. So you're adding more subscriptions?
No. No, this is just, they go up every year. Yes, the cost, they just keep increasing the cost by a certain percentage every year. So no, we're not adding anything. This is just to maintain what we have.
Thank you.
Yep, sure.
So this is the percentage of increase? What is that?
Mm-hmm, yeah. We can get you, Ashley and I can send you more, more very detailed whole synopsis of that whole situation. And basically, we just haven't had the, we haven't had the budget increase to match the increases that come in every single year. And we have already done our due diligence to see how we can decrease that expense. And there is no way, in order to have what we need, this is what we need to have. So, but we'll, we'll get you the details on that.
Thanks.
Sure.
Behind it.
Good. If you, Supervisor, if you read that and you still have more questions, just let me know.
Okay, thank you.
And we'll, yeah, we can chat about it. Okay, recent accomplishments. This is my favorite part. So, that's where I get to tell everybody what we've been doing and some of the, some of the great things that we've done in the last year. So, I mean, I'm sure as anyone who keeps up on the news in Polk County knows, our office has prosecuted many high-profile cases, very important cases. Every case is important, but there are some that we really especially focus on, which is serious and violent crime particularly. We prosecuted at least 12 cases involving vehicular death, which is very tragically more than double the number filed in 2023. People, please stop driving inebriated, please stop driving under the influence, and please stop driving while you're looking at your phones. And all of that, yes, just, please drive, please drive well. But mostly, please do not drive intoxicated. That is what the majority of these cases involve, is people driving intoxicated, either from drugs or alcohol or both. We obtained several convictions in cases of deaths and child abuse of children, including the amazing and really incredible work of Assistant County Attorneys Kevin Bell and Megan Guns, resulting in the prosecution and conviction of pediatric surgeon Dr. Lynn Lindeman, who, to repeat, was a pediatric surgeon. And also several first and second degree murder convictions for shootings. And then on the civil side, we've continued to defend the county and defended the county against several high-profile lawsuits as well. And as I mentioned earlier, we have expanded the Community Represented Dialogs Program. Again, for those who don't know what I'm talking about at all, who may be watching this later and just aren't familiar with what that is. We offer the opportunity for people, and the judge orders that, for certain crimes, that there is a victim offender dialogue that takes place, which is the opportunity for the victim and offender, together with a facilitator, to have a conversation about what happened in that case. And, and to be able to ask questions, for the victim to be able to ask questions of the offender. And it, in the studies that have been done, and there's been a lot of them on victim offender dialogues, it shows that victims have a far higher satisfaction with what they ascribe to the criminal justice system when they have a victim offender dialogue. Because if we don't have a victim offender dialogue, there is really no other substantial place and time allowed for any kind of conversation like that. And they may never have the chance to get some of the answers, or even, they may not get answers, but even just ask the questions that they want to ask about what happened. So, that's incredibly important and really helps people move forward in their lives when they are victimized. And then, we also wanted the opportunity, though, for people who commit crimes that don't have an individual named victim, say a shoplifting case. We also wanted an opportunity for those folks to be held accountable for the harm done to the community. So we started Community Represented Dialogues, and we recruited so far about 45 volunteers from the community to sit and represent the community in that dialogue when there is no, like, individual victim, or in cases where a victim declines. Because it's always, of course, up to the victim, they have the power to decide, do they want to do a victim offender dialogue or not? And if they say no, then we will still move forward, but we will have a community representative, you know, in that, in that dialogue. So, as of December 11th, we had done 786 of those dialogues last year, which we're extremely proud of, which went from basically zero before I was in office. And then now we've done over 800 since then, you know, since December 11th, it's now over 800. And also critically important is we've involved our community in our justice system by having these community volunteers who step forward and want to volunteer to participate in these dialogues. And this is not my justice system, this is the justice system of the people of Polk County. And so it's really important to me that, to the extent that we're able, we involve the community in the justice system. And this is one way that we're able to do it. We also, in July of 2024, launched a program called Alternatives Polk County, which is very closely modeled on a program in Story County that they've had in existence for several years. So they have data on that program, which is great, because I'm kind of a data nerd and I want to do things that work. So, I want to try things where somebody's tried it before, and I don't, I don't want us to be necessarily the trial balloon. So, in, in, in this program, it's a diversion program for low-level, nonviolent misdemeanors. And through December 11th of last year, 256 people were held accountable through participation in a community restorative dialogue. And this allows the prosecutor on that docket, which is one of our busiest dockets by far, poor Joe Nearing does an amazing job, but he is swamped constantly. This has allowed him to focus on the more serious cases and just the more time-consuming cases. And it also reduces caseloads on the courts, which is helpful. But here's the real thing that matters to me really above all. In Story County, there's a 48% reoffense rate for people who don't go through this program. And when they do, it's an 8% reoffense rate.
So, so just help me, what kind of, what kind of offenses are, that meet the threshold for low-level, nonviolent misdemeanors? Are these like simple possession?
It could be trespass, it could be low-level shop, you know, really low-level, like, shoplifting, you know, fifth, very low-level shoplifting, things like that.
Wow, that, that's an amazing statistic.
Yeah.
So, this, this, this program, I mean, the, the data is pretty overwhelming. Is there, is there direct savings dollars that you can, you can save as a result of not having these folks reoffend? That we can save a lot of money by continuing this and expanding it?
Well, absolutely. I mean, if you, I haven't crunched the numbers myself yet, because we haven't had the program that long for, for us.
Right.
But if you just extrapolate that percentage of reduction, assign it to a number of people, and you talk about how many fewer people then are gonna end up in the jail.
Court resources.
That alone, and, and, and the resources by law enforcement to have to arrest those people and take them to jail and process them, and the cost to the county of jailing people, it's, it's huge. So, and the key to that, though, even though, I want to say, we've launched this program, but we sort of haven't fully launched it. And here's what I mean by that. In Story County, they have a, somebody who essentially does intensive social work with those folks. So they don't only have to participate in a dialogue, there's intensive casework being done. And a lot of times, the things I mentioned before are, are the situation there. They're off their meds, they, they don't have housing, they don't, you know, whatever the case may be. And so, sort of short-term intensive casework with those folks can really help get them kind of back on the right path. And then that's where you end up with this lower, these lower recidivism rates, which are amazing. So, it, it would just save our community in dollar cost, in suffering cost, you know, in, in so many different ways. So, that's again, a key piece of why we're requesting a full-time social worker. Yeah.
At, at our luncheon last week, you mentioned that 30% of the cases that were referred had gone through the process. That's why you needed more funding to get more there. So first, what percentage of the cases have gone through? Like, you, you mentioned what, 746, right? And that's 30% of what had been referred there? So are there more that could be referred there, I guess is what I'm asking?
Yes. There are more that actually are referred there, but we don't have the funding to pay the facilitators to do the dialogues.
Okay.
So that's why we're requesting that.
But are, is many getting referred there, that can be referred there?
Yes. I mean, judges, judges are ordering their victim offender dialogues or community restorative dialogues in almost every case. There are certain subsets of cases where it's not appropriate, but in the cases where it's appropriate, they're being ordered.
They're always being reordered, 30% are making it. So with that 32,000 increase, will that cover what percentage more of the cases? We're at 30%, would that get us up to 50%, would that get us up to 70%?
That is, that would be, it'd get us to half, okay.
And these are volunteers, so it's really paying for their parking and their...
No, the, the community representatives are volunteers, the facilitators or mediators are certified mediators. They are paid, and those are the, those are folks who've been mediating for the Polk County Attorney's Office for, you know, years and years. Yep.
Thank you.
Uh-huh. So, moving on, I don't want to take up too much time, I gotta get moving here. So license, the license reinstatement program, we made some significant positive changes to that a couple of months after I took office. Through November of 2024, 707 plans were created in, just in, in 2024. And that was, or is, a 35% increase over the same period last year, and a 92% increase over the same period in 2022, which is before I took office. So, we wanted to make it easier and less expensive for people to get their license back, because we don't want that cycle of poverty to continue where they keep getting tickets for driving suspended, and then they just keep getting pulled down the drain further and further. So, we've made it easier and more streamlined and just clearer for people to be able to get their licenses back, but more importantly, less expensive. So, it used to be a hundred-dollar deposit and 50 bucks a month, period, you couldn't pay anything less. And we eliminated the deposit and we made it where we have the IRS's ability to pay calculator. And they plug in their information, and whatever the IRS's ability to pay calculator says is what they can pay, that's what they can pay. And in some cases, it can be as little as $1, but they are paying, and they're paying something every single month. So, that's important. And the most important thing is we're able to get them back a legal driver's license, so they're able to be driving legally. So that's been great. Next, we were having some issues with getting blood draws. When we, when the law enforcement had a warrant for a blood draw, we had a period of, I think a couple of years, where we were kind of wandering in the wilderness and officers were hard-pressed to find any place to get those blood draws done. And I, we definitely don't have time to get into the whys of that, but the upshot is, First Assistant County Attorney Justin Allen, who's here today, as well as Waukees Police Chief McCluskey, and I worked together very hard over a few years to make this happen and talked to the head people at the area, three big area hospitals here in Polk County. And two of them now have agreed and are doing those blood draws for us when we need that, because that's how we can hold people accountable. If somebody's driving under the influence and a judge orders a blood draw, we have to have somebody to do it, and we didn't have anyone to do it. And we used to, but then that went away, and that's a whole big thing. But anyway, these collaborations took a couple of years and a lot of meetings. So we're very, very proud that we just kept at it and kept at it. So two of the three hospitals are doing them, and the third one is, is, seems like they're going to be doing it as well shortly. So that's, that's great. And then I'm also co-leading the CJCC, which is the Polk County Criminal Justice Coordinating Council. The Diversion and Deflection Committee, I've been working on a guide for diversion programs, especially for youth, because we were told by some patrol officers at various departments here in Polk County that a lot of the patrol officers weren't familiar with all of the ways that they can better deal with youth when they encounter youth in their, you know, in their patrol duties. So, we're putting together a guide for patrol officers, so that they, they just have all the contact information and they can make the appropriate contacts when they're out in the field. And then, I've also continued to attend neighborhood meetings, churches, community events around the county to talk about priorities, increase our community outreach, recruit volunteers for our community restorative dialogue program, and also just listen to community concerns. So, I've really made and will continue to make a huge effort to be out in the community as much as possible. And, and also if people contact our office, I spend a lot of time addressing individual concerns as well. I think that's really important, and that's what I'm here to do, is listen to the people of Polk County. So, upcoming opportunities and considerations. In the near term, we'd like to expand that Alternatives Polk County program, as I mentioned, with the use of a social worker, so we can hopefully replicate the success of Story County, reducing recidivism. I'd like to, I'd like to beat Story County, actually, and do better than them, but we'll see what happens. And then...
On that point, you did share some information that I think would help, be helpful to my colleagues about your due diligence on using perhaps another social worker within, within...
Yes, yes. Last year, right, last year when we made this request, the board, essentially, some folks on the board basically said, kind of, we're not saying no, we're just saying not right now. We'd like you to look into whether the five social workers that work for Polk County Behavioral Health can do this. And I, I looked into that, and they are plenty busy doing everything that they need to do. So the answer to that was, they really don't have, you know, additional bandwidth. And I would also add that in the interim now, Polk County Behavioral Health, at least it's my understanding, isn't going to really exist as it currently exists today anyway, but that's being moved into the state regions program. And I'm totally out of my depth here, I may be saying something that's incorrect, but that's my understanding.
Yes.
So, yes. And then, the next point, as Supervisor Altringer referenced earlier, that we're only, we're only able to do currently because of the restriction on budgeting to pay the facilitators about a third of the VODs and CRDs that are ordered by a judge. So increased funding will allow us to double that number. Oh, there's the information that we asked for earlier.
50%? Are we in the 50?
Yep. So, we're also working on developing a data dashboard and transparency and letting the public know exactly what we're, what, to the extent we can. Obviously, if there's a pending investigation, sometimes unfortunately, I can't say much or anything during a pending investigation. But to let the public just know the data and the numbers in our office, it's really important to me. So we've been working with Polk County CJCC, an entity, a nonprofit called Prosecution Performance Indicators, and a federal government entity called Justice Counts to put together a data dashboard. I'm hoping that we'll have something by the end of this year, 2025, that the public can just go to and look at our data very easily. And then, over the past year or so, I guess almost two years, actually, I've been meeting with, United Way has been the conveners of these meetings. I've been meeting with them, with law enforcement, and with community stakeholders of all kinds, including a lot of nonprofits, to bring something called Community Violence Intervention to Polk County. This is a model that is based on something called GVI, which is called Group Violence Intervention. And this is the only approach, but there is a lot of data behind. And in every community across the country where GVI slash CBI, whichever you want to call it, has been rolled out and implemented, there's been a reduction in fatal and non-fatal shootings. So this is really important. Obviously, we want our community to be as safe as possible, and this, this will get us there. It's, it's never, it's never not worked anywhere that it's been rolled out, which is really amazing. And just this last week, I met with Chief McTaggart, the new Des Moines Police Chief, along with the folks from United Way, just to sit down and just kind of explain it, since Chief McTaggart just came on, you know, fairly recently. And he is 100% behind it, you know. He said, "I'm all for anything that is gonna reduce fatal and non-fatal shootings in our community." And so, DMPD is very committed to participating. And this program is very law enforcement-focused and centered, so we absolutely would have to have the cooperation and the collaboration with DMPD, and ultimately, other departments too. But initially, since the majority of the serious and violent crimes happen in Des Moines, that's where we want to initially focus.
And, and does this program happen in, in conjunction with schools?
Working with the schools is gonna be a component of that. This is just, just literally launching, like, when I say launch, I don't mean that it's gonna be fully implemented, but I mean it's gonna be the beginning of getting it implemented. On January 28th, there's gonna be a rollout event to kind of explain this all to the community at the Varsity Theater. I think it's at 4:00 PM. But the community is welcome to come to that as well and have input.
Is this gonna be different than the Violence Interruption Program that's currently...
Yes, it is. And there are communities in the nation, most notably Ramsey County, which is St. Paul, Minnesota, where they have both. So one doesn't, they both kind of have a different approach. And different approaches are gonna reach different people, so, so it's totally fine to have both. And so, yeah, the, you know, the Cure Violence Model may still exist here, and that would be great. This is an additional, and I would say just more comprehensive in that it more heavily involves law enforcement
Okay.
with the CVI/GVI model.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. And then, upcoming opportunities and considerations in the long term. We want to find ways to improve and expand our Youthful Offender Program. Actually, it's called the Youthful Supervision Program. It's called the Youthful Supervision Program. And that serves young adults who are charged with a felony. We've looked, we've started to look at other successful programs like ours, felony diversion programs across the nation. And in those programs, the key difference, again, seems to be having a social worker to work with those kids and with their families. Because a lot of those young people have a lot of strikes against them in a lot of different ways. And so the more that we can try to connect them with services, mentors, support, the better. We'd also like to work with law enforcement to develop a law enforcement assisted diversion program. And again, that also requires, that's a whole other program, so that may be several years down the road. But it's, again, another program that has been rolled out nationwide with great success in reducing reoffense rates. We'd like to develop ways to expand our collections program. Our collections program generates over $1 million for the general fund and provides restitutions for victims. And we'd also like to continue to increase access to our license reinstatement program, so residents are driving legally. I think, that's all.
Excellent. Any questions?
Yeah, I mean, unfortunately, all I have are in-the-weeds questions, because all I have are, like, in-the-weeds numbers, so...
Okay, no worries.
And I didn't understand yesterday that this was our number question point, so you're not being targeted. I didn't know that I should have been asking these questions yesterday.
No worries. Okay.
So you have on page three, why are you looking at this doubling of expense decrease on time, the ongoing non-personal expense between 25, 26, and 26, are you looking at a big office upgrade? Or I was just curious what was going on there?
Are you talking about where it says Personal Services COLA Anniversary? Is that what you're talking about?
No, I understand why those are increased. I mean, down on the expense increase-decrease salary and benefits, ongoing non-personal expenses, monthly phone charge, office supplies, et cetera. It goes from $31,000 to $62,000.
Oh, yeah. This is definitely gonna be it. Ashley, would you like to come up here? Yeah, this is, this is something that I don't personally prepare, so I'm gonna be a really bad person to try to explain this, because I don't, I'm more the large wide-view person, not the microscope. She's the microscope person, and she does a great job at it.
The microscope, yes. So are you talking about, I believe, maybe the social work? Like, if we have a social worker, that's what we would be asking for?
I'm talking about page three, the bottom box, expense increase for ongoing non-personal expenses, monthly phone charge, office supplies, et cetera. You're asking in 25, 26, $31,500, and then in 26, 27, you're doubling that to $61,000. Just curious.
It's the decision packet titled Victim Offender Dialogue Program? Because that would just be part of-
I know it's not the same number, but-
Yeah, yeah, that's not the same number. So I don't know if that would be if we were hiring a social worker? I mean, that's kind of what I, that's not-
No.
Because I don't know.
No.
Okay, well, we can go on to the next question, you can figure that out.
We'll get back to you about that. I'm not sure if that, it would seem to me that it would be to pay facilitators, because that's not our personnel.
Non-personal expense.
We pay facilitators on like a 1099 basis, on a contract basis, they're not part of Polk County payroll, the facilitators who do those.
Okay, it was the monthly phone charge, office supplies that caught my attention. And then on page five, you have the, so this is the CLE, and I noticed that looks like you, like you said, for years you've been getting $32,000, right? And it hasn't increased for years. But you're asking for 50, would doubling it to 64 instead of going to 50 get you to where you need it to be?
I don't believe so. I believe we're asking for what we need based on-
I mean, if you've been operating for 32 for so long, it seems like having 64 would be like, wow. And so, just looking for where we-
Yeah, surely anything would help, but we're having to decline attorneys going to conferences that we know would be not only good for them, but that they need to retain their licenses. They can do other CLEs, but oftentimes they're just not as appropriate, they're not as targeted, they're not relevant to perhaps exactly the area that that attorney is working in in the office, say a sex abuse conference, right? We want to be able to send them to the CLEs that are most appropriate for the work they're doing. And sometimes we can't currently do that, or we have to send them to a conference, maybe that's here in Des Moines, but it's like a general conference where maybe there's an hour on sex abuse, right? And the rest of it is about all kinds of other legal education things, but doesn't really have a lot of relevance. So ideally, we would have what we requested because that would enable us to actually do what we believe is, is important and necessary for our people, but anything-
Do you ever do online conferences?
What's that?
Do you ever do the online ones? I do a lot of the online CLEs.
Some, some folks do, yeah.
Because our current budget only covers about half of those attorneys to be able to actually go to the ICAA Conference, which is the main conference that covers all of the requirements for the, their credentials that they have to have the requirements. So by at least having that additional funds, that would allow the rest of the attorneys to be able to attend that conference. And some of that also includes bringing in people to the office as well to help with some of those requirements. But that ICAA Conference actually covers everything that they need in one conference.
Yeah, I think it's, it's outlined up here in that justification box.
Okay. And like I said, I know that those are the weed ones because that's what's highlighted in here, it's the weeds.
Yeah, no worries.
So I'm sure I'll have more questions, especially after Deb and I are meeting, so.
Thank you. Yeah, just let us know, can shoot us an email or give me a call, and we'll come over and discuss it or whatever you need.
Okay, great.
Well, again, I, I'd like to commend you for your work on the driver license reinstatement program. And I think the public is always benefits from having properly licensed and insured drivers on the road, and this gets us closer to that. And I think it's been a, I think it's been a very impactful program, so thank you for your work on that.
Thank you.
Thanks for your presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we're going to have Polk County Health Department, Helen weighing in for her final appearance with-
Yes. I thought it would be unfair to ask Julianne to do this.
I think that's-
So I thought-
Yes.
One of my last official budget presentation, so. I'm going to have Mandy drive because I am also technologically challenged to be able to run both of these things. So Kimberly, you're not alone. Helen Eddy, Director, Polk County Health Department. And this is our fiscal year '25-'26 budget request. Our estimated revenue is $4,898,000. Our requested expense is $9,697,000. We currently have 45.9 full-time equivalents in employees. The amount which our expense request is over target is $40,000. Our revenue decrease compared to the current budget is $157,000. Those changes include a $352,000 increase in our immunization services, physicals, and travel clinic expenses. We have opened additional green card clinic slots in our schedule to help people with their change in their legal status, and they do pay for those vaccinations and additional immunization clinics. We have an increase of $87,000 in various grant adjustments. The biggest decrease is the HUD grant decrease, which ends in March 2025. That HUD grant is what funds our lead remediation program, and that grant is ending. We will be applying for a new grant when that information becomes available. HUD is changing the process, so we're anxiously awaiting that. For your information, in our current HUD grant, we have remediated lead in 109 homes in Polk County, rendering them safe for children in, in our community. These are homes that have children under the age of six that are exposed to lead, and the homeowners need to meet certain income requirements. So it's focused on old housing stock in some of our most vulnerable neighborhoods. Since program inception, we have remediated lead in 571 homes and rendered them safe and safer for inhabitation in Polk County. Our expense request is a, is an increase of $64,000 compared to our current budget. And those changes include some increases in expenses tied to medical and health services, tied to those increases in immunization physicals, and some cardiovascular screening that we are doing. We have personnel services, COLA increase of $133,000. And then we have an increase in our medical and laboratory and other supplies based on utilization, again, directly tied to that increase in the number of lab services and immunizations and things that we are providing of $90,000. We also have a decrease in expense related to that HUD grant and also our COVID emergency preparedness grant, which ended, that funding ended in December of $303,000. And then a decrease in expense related to our decision package. And I'll move to that, and we'll explain what we're proposing to do. We are looking to reclassify an administrative supervisor position in our department to more fully support our medical billing. We have made a move as we've implemented our new, our new EMR model, CureMD, that allows us to directly monitor and take care of the medical billing versus subcontracting, contracting that out to an outside provider. So that is providing us some savings, but it's also providing us better control and better transparency into that process. So we have an individual in our staff who has those skills and is currently administrative supervisor. We are looking to reclassify that. We have a placeholder as an accountant, we'll work with HR to determine exactly what that job description should be. With that, we would add on and propose adding in an administrative assistant position to take over payroll and those truly administrative functions.
So this is being outsourced right now?
The medical billing was until July 1st, and we're currently doing it. But it is, as we're learning our way through it, we are, it's becoming more and more of that individual's position. The other thing is that looking forward to changes that will be coming with the regionalization of local public health, we anticipate that we will have significantly more budget work and grant work that we have to do because we will likely be the fiscal agent. So this would, reclassification of this position would provide some administrative and budget help to Mandy, who does all that work currently when we serve as fiscal agent. To help pay for this position, what you'll see on the slide is that we have, we're looking at a $57,000 reduction in expense in our outside help, or extra help, which is our nursing as needed, we call them the PRN pool. We are not doing as many outside flu clinics. The majority of individuals get flu shots now through pharmacies. We focus our efforts on providing flu clinics to communities and populations that that may not be convenient. So we're looking to help cover the cost of this position in this decision package through the reduction in that PRN budget. And then you'll see on the next line, that reduction of $80,000 in expense that we have been paying to an outside provider for medical billing. And when we've looked at some of those numbers and with the plugin, we still have about $36,000 in total that will help cover if it is not an accountant position. So overall, this move in this decision package will provide some savings to the county.
That's great.
So any questions on that before I move forward? Okay, next slide. Our recent accomplishments, we have added a regional healthcare coalition, public health emergency preparedness, and EMS coordinator, that's a mouthful. But this is a position that is 100% state grant funded, and we serve, Mandy, how many, how many counties are in that, how many? 13, that's what I thought, 13 counties. And we serve as the fiscal agent, and now we have brought this preparedness coordinator in to work in our office, 100% grant funded. We, I mentioned earlier that we have expanded our, our work, we are providing immigration physicals every Tuesday to about 20 to 25 a day on Tuesdays. These are for people that are looking to change their legal status. And we've expanded our green card clinic, that's the vaccination-only portion of this, to meet the community needs, and we're seeing tremendous response from the community on this. Just want to touch on the, our Talk It Up, Lock It Up Gun Safety Campaign. Kimberly mentioned the CBI, our program came out of those conversations. This is where we are encouraging our gun owners in the community to safely store those firearms and reduce access. And we have partnered with community organizations, the libraries, the VA, law enforcement, fire departments, and we have free gun locks available in over 40 locations across Polk County. In 2024, we completed our community health needs assessment. This is a collaborative process with community partners, including United Way of Central Iowa, all of the major health systems, where we go out and survey the community to understand what they're seeing in terms of needs across the community. It happens every three years. Importantly, this, this cycle, the Polk County Health Department led intentional small group conversations with community groups whose voices are not normally at the table. We talked to refugee and immigrant groups, the LGBTQ plus community, the African-American community, and, and I think, well, three different refugee and immigrant groups. And it provides us with some important information, and it is posted on our Polk County Health Department website. And we are going to be doing follow-up work to dig into what those identified needs are and how we may address those across Polk County. Mentioned already, we changed our billing medical provider, again, to provide better transparency and control over that part of our process. We've recently implemented Vaccines for Adults Program. This is a program that parallels vaccines for children. It's funded by the state, but it allows low-income adults now to get free vaccines, and we are the only provider for those in, in Polk County. And because we've gotten so busy in our lab, we worked with General Services, and we expanded our lab waiting room so that we can more confidentially and comfortably take care of people needing our services. Upcoming opportunities and considerations, we have, we're working with HR to work through the process. There are two pieces to that regional healthcare coalition. There is the EMS provider and that coordinator that is already based out of Polk County. The other side of it is a hospital preparedness program coordinator, same program, same funding, 100% state grant funded, also having them employed by Polk County and residing at the Polk County Health Department. We do the majority of the work, it makes sense for collaboration, and again, 100% state grant funded. If that funding would go away from the state, the position goes away with both of those. We will also, we, I guess not me, Julianne and the team, will be conducting those community health needs assessments, community conversations. It's, it's imperative that when we've gone out to the community and asked for their input on what the problem is, that we follow up by going back to that community, and particularly those small groups that we've worked with, to help identify what they think will improve that situation. So those conversations will be going on in 2025, and those will be used to inform programs and services and initiatives at the Health Department. We're going to be implementing travel vaccine insurance procedure changes, oh, yes.
No, I'm sorry, it's a late question. When you're doing those community health conversations-
Yes.
Where are you having them?
We have them out in the community. We've held them at primary healthcare, where there is programming for the LGBTQ plus community, African-American community. We partnered with Corinthian Baptist. And then we have gone to locations, I believe, with our refugee and immigrant communities. We did some more partnering with Des Moines Public Schools and their community liaison. So we work through a variety of partnerships and try to take these conversations to locations that are comfortable for them.
So some work with schools or-
Yes.
-school-aged kids?
Absolutely.
Sounds important.
And I think we, as we have these follow-up conversations, there's going to be a lot of information that comes out of some of these groups that will help inform potentially some of the programming at Global Neighbors Across the Street, and that could also be a place for some follow-up conversations.
Thank you.
We are implementing travel vaccine insurance procedure changes. Again, with our implementation of CureMD, we now have the ability to, ahead of an appointment, to check and see which travel vaccines are covered by insurance, and those that are not covered by insurance, we will collect that money at the time of service. Prior to this, we would have to go ahead, provide the service, work through the medical billing company, send it out, and then collect payment. So it's going to streamline that process for us. We will be, are looking to implement a Plan B Narcan vending machine out in front of the Polk County Health Department in partnership with the Family Planning Council of Iowa. They have received a grant that will pay for the vending machine, the maintenance, and the product that goes in it. It will be temperature-controlled, and this will allow our community to have 24/7, 365 days a year, access to not only Plan B and Narcan, but we'll be putting personal hygiene supplies and other things in there, a variety of things that people in our community might need. We've recently added free Narcan for the community at our front desk, and I'm pleased to say we had someone take advantage of that for the first time yesterday. So that's, that's a hopeful thing. And then, near term, we are successfully transitioning to a new director. My last day is Friday, and Julianne is hitting the ground running and building those relationships already, not only with our staff, but with the community. So very, very pleased to have her coming on board. Long term, and this was in our legislative priorities, again, that legalization of not only fentanyl test strips, but other test strips. We think it's important that we continue to expand our harm reduction activities and make sure that people can survive, and then if, when they're ready, be connected to the care and the services that they need. Because we've done this community health needs assessment, and we'll be doing this health improvement plan, that'll give us an opportunity, and Julianne an opportunity to evaluate the Health Department strategic plan and that health improvement plan. That's kind of the cycle that we go through with these community health needs assessment, is that you, you assess, you go out and you listen again, and then you put a plan in place. So it's an, it's an ongoing quality improvement process. And then the last thing on the list is the local public health regionalization. As we've been told, there are going to be continued conversations about what this is going to look like and could look like throughout 2025, with regionalization and legislation pending in 2026. So as they finish up the, the work HHS does with the mental health, local public health will be next. So I know that at our meeting last week, we talked about, you know, looking at what are mandated services, what are not. This is going to be something to watch. We don't know what are those services that the state's looking to have uniformly delivered across the state, what those regions are going to look like. We'll have to monitor that, we'll have to monitor what kind of money comes along with that from the state, because local public health is significantly funded currently by the counties. To the tune of the last number I saw, $43 to $44 million is provided by counties to fund local public health. Certainly in Polk County, our budget is, is heavily funded by the Board of Supervisors in this process.
What are the other funding sources?
For, for us, we have grants that come in from purely state dollars, it's a local, local public health grant, it's 800 and how many thousand dollars? There's some money that comes there, there's a separate immunization- There's a separate immunization grant. We break them down, and we look at them as what is purely controlled by the state, what are federal CDC pass-through dollars that come, such as immunization dollars, sexually transmitted infection dollars, et cetera. We have the HUD grant. We've applied for that separately. Some of the smaller health departments in the state, they operate purely on what they receive from the state to do that work. Immunization dollars, one off the top of my head, we receive $42,000 from the state to do that. That doesn't even cover the cost of our immunization coordinator, much less what it takes to send nurses into the schools to do the school audits. So that's an example.
Yeah, it's an interesting, the regionalization is an interesting dilemma, because if the state takes that on and they take over all of the funding for that, then they're going to have to come up with about an additional $40 million on an annual basis at the state, and then create this regional network. And as they take all these on, the predictions are that by the end of '26, they'll have $2 billion less in revenue due to the flat tax they're implementing. So I, you know, I think they can absorb a certain amount of that with the taxpayer trust fund, but eventually they're going to run out of money. And then I do wonder how we're going to provide these services. But I wanted to talk about the HUD grant, because obviously we know that's ending, and we know that you have to transition. What's that transition look like until you know what the new mechanism is going to be to deal with lead abatement? And how are you going to cover the $450,000?
Well, we'll continue the work that we have funded currently. We have those houses in the pipeline. There's a certain wind-down period for the current grant and a certain ramp-up period. So we will not take on lead remediation that we do not have funding for. When we have applied for previous HUD grants, and usually in our budget, there's what, $300,000 per year of county money that is in there as match. So sometimes if we have not expended those county dollars, that allows us to continue that work.
Okay. So you feel like we're not going to have to stop the program or lay off? And I know a lot of those inspectors are, a lot of the people that are doing the remediation are third-party, but I know some employees as well that are grant-funded, but that will continue? And every indication is that this is, it's just a new redesign of the grant. It's not an ending of this work.
It actually, if they do what they're indicating that they will do, it will streamline the process. For any health department or entity that has had a grant and has been in good compliance, which we have been, we have been in green status, which is over 90% compliance all the way throughout our grant. We may not actually have to submit a full grant application. They're going to take the allocation of dollars they have, give 80% of it to existing programs, and leave 20% for new programs to go through a competitive grant process. So if that's the way it pans out, that's actually good news for us, because we have had strong performance throughout, actually, the entire life of our multiple grants with HUD.
Excellent. Well, Helen, you've led us through some tough times, and we're grateful for your leadership and all your work for Polk County, and we wish you much happiness and success in retirement, and know that you'll be having more fun than the rest of us every single day.
Well, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I do, and I do want to take this opportunity to thank the Board of Supervisors for giving me the opportunity to serve Polk County for the last seven years. It's been a delight. I may get a little verklempt up here and a little teary, but I also want to take the opportunity to thank the hard-working people at the Polk County Health Department. Sometimes we have certain programs that hit the media, and those are big and splashy, and, you know, we like that because it highlights the work that we do. But there are people that work hard, day in, day out, unsung heroes, that are keeping our community safe, and my heart goes out to them. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Helen, this is Angela. I'm sorry, I can't be there. I want to thank you for your service and everything you've done for Polk County. You're a true leader, and...
Well, thank you, Angela. Thank you for the kind words. I'm going to run out it right to the end. I have a Board of Health meeting on Friday morning at 8:30, and I might do a mic drop at the end of that. I think I'm done at that. But anyway, it has, it's been, it's been, it's been a pleasure, and it's been a very, very rewarding experience. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Julie? All right, Julie, you're the last one, so you can swing for the fence.
Oh, great. Last but not least. I'm Julie Hagerty, Polk County Recorder. A lot of people don't really know what the recorder does. Our office does several unfunded state mandates. One of them is registrations of recreational vehicles that don't run on the road. The other one is the vital records department, where we issue marriage licenses and record marriages, deaths, and births in Polk County. And we now have a statewide system, but that happened maybe three or four years ago. But until then, it was just Polk County. Our main income comes from recording real estate records. We also, by the way, issue, we process passport applications, which is, that's not state, that is the US Department of State. But our main function has always been recording real estate transactions, and that is, all that money goes into the general fund. So my budget, starting with my, I do want to start out by saying that we're an essential component of the economy, because of the importance of timely filings related to real estate transactions and record-keeping. Revenue from the last quarter of this year was 18% higher than the same time last year, and more than 2,500 more documents were recorded in the same quarter of 2024 than 2023. However, the housing market is still a little sluggish, and interest rates are still high. But the pendulum seems to be swinging a little bit in the positive direction, so we're hoping to see a little bit more increase in our revenue. 65% of our filings happen through electronic submission, and real estate brokers, attorneys, banks, and other stakeholders still rely on the abstract companies making that final search, and the expectation that documents will be recorded on the same day they are received. We are one of the few abstract states in the country, and we display up-to-the-minute filings. Therefore, the real estate community can rely on our records to be complete and accurate. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the Board, always providing me with the resources needed to deliver these services. For each of the last 18 years, we have served the citizens of Polk County while remaining self-sustaining. We have always kept within the constraints of our budget and ended each year under target. I credit my staff with their superb customer service and stepping up where needed, none of which could happen without your support, and as always, is very much appreciated. The estimated revenue for the '25-'26 budget is $3,315,000. Requested expenses, $3,343,000. Current full-time employees, 27, and it looks like 0% of our target. The revenue estimate changed for $160,000, and this change includes the anticipated decrease in recording fees due to the housing market. We're hoping that that number will change. Decrease in the boat revenue, '25-'26, because the renewal years for boats happens every three years. So that was decreased by $35,000. And the decrease in company fee revenue is based on the trend. Expense request, the change includes, it was expense increase compared to current budget is $56,000 less personal service fees, and there is a decrease in printing costs due to the renewal of the boat year. Some of our recent accomplishments is that we have added property check software after many inquiries from concerned citizens regarding property theft. Although we are an abstract state, late-night commercials and events from other states have raised concern about the potential for property fraud, allowing someone to steal property by recording fraudulent deed. This year, our office installed property check software that helps protect constituents from potential property fraud. It is a free-of-charge subscription-based feature that enables constituents to be notified of any recorded transaction or document that affects their property. We finished birth death match with our Department of Health and Human Services, leading the Department of Health and Human Services from the state gives us a match to, we go to the birth records, they give us the deaths, we go to the birth record and mark the deceased. An ongoing project to add older real estate records and imaging to our current website. And the biggest news is that Iowa, the Iowa County Recorders Association begins, has began a modernization study to increase our recording fees and charges, which have not been changed over 40 years. Upcoming opportunities in the near term is that modernization study will benefit counties by increasing filing fees and simplifying recording standards statewide. Passage of the modernization bill, increasing filing fees are projected to positively impact every county in the state. The Polk County Recorders Office revenues are estimated to be increased over $725,000 per year, based on 2023 data. In the long term, this modernization study will simplify recording standards requirements and will enhance the recording process by making fees consistent across the state.
Julie, thank you. I would be remiss not to say to you in public what I've said to you in private, and six years that I've been a county supervisor, I've never had a negative complaint about any of the customer service received in your office, and your employees really exemplify what's best about Polk County. So thank you for your leadership, and thank you for your employees for the work they do every day.
Well, I'd be remiss if I didn't publicly say that the Recorders Office is the best county in Polk County. But I do, I do would like to say that I have contacted over, I've sent an email and a letter to over 30 of our representatives and senators at the Capitol, allowing them some heads up to know that the modernization bill will be coming their way, and we would like them to read it over and consider helping pass that bill. It's a very, the Recorders Association has asked this legislature for increasing fees for, ah, 10 years since I've been here, and they've never passed it. And it's been 40 years, I think it's time. So I really kind of foresee that this will pass and happen. We've really, we have the backing of many of our stakeholders, and we hope to help, you help with your influence and the influence of the county quarters.
And I think that's our next meeting, and I did want to say that that represents, or would represent about $779,000 for Polk County. So that's...
Conservatively.
Yeah, that's real money.
Yes.
So it would make...
And it would help all the counties of the state. I don't want the legislators to think that it's just going to help.
No.
But it, I mean, we're just the largest county.
Right.
But it is, it would, yes, it would be a great help.
Every 40 years or so, you...
Every 40 years or so, we should get that.
Raise the fees, so.
Yeah.
Well, we appreciate it. Any other questions? Hearing done?
Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Appreciate it.